Let's see, it looks like we've got everybody. Yeah. Great. Yeah, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, like to welcome everybody out tonight for the Kidittas County Public Hospital District Number One. This is our regular special board meeting. So, right, so welcome. But can, Mandy, can you do a roll call?
Sure. Bob Davis.
Here.
Matt Altman.
Here.
Erica Libinow.
Here.
John Ward.
Here.
Terry Clark.
Here.
Julie Peterson.
Here.
Scott Olander.
Here.
Dr. Martin.
Here.
Mandy Olson. Don't see her yet. Vicki Macharo.
Here.
Rhonda Holden. Perry Barr.
Here.
Michelle Whirl.
Here.
Jeff Yamada.
Here.
Ron Erlacher.
Here.
Jason Adler.
Here.
Dr. O'Brien. Looks like he's still connecting. Mandy Olson.
Just made it. I'm here.
Just see there. Um. And Tricia was on there. I don't see her at the moment, and it looks like Dr. O'Brien is connecting.
Okay, is that pretty much, is there anyone else that's on there that would like to identify themselves that we haven't called out? Great, so we'll move on with the approval of the agenda. Can we get approval for the agenda?
I move to approve.
Second. Sorry, either way. Yeah, John's fine.
Okay, motion by Erica, seen by John, to approve the agenda. Aye.
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 No opposed. We have the consent agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yeah, move to approve.
I second it.
Motion by Terry. By Terry. All in favor, say aye.
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 No opposed. Do we have any public comments? Usually do this around 5:30, but I didn't see anyone that I didn't recognize. We see him pop on, we can address that a little bit later. So we'll just move right into reports and dashboards, starting with quality with Mandy Olson.
So first of all, I apologize for the abbreviated report in the not having the dashboard. It's just been all hands on deck with COVID vaccine, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I have a question. What's this COVID you're talking about?
Oh.
All right, yeah, I, I mean, we're moving over eventually. I guess we've already moved over out of the hospital and it'll be at the fairgrounds from now on?
Yes, that started on Tuesday.
Okay.
So.
And then we just got more vaccine a couple days ago.
I think that was Monday.
Monday, okay.
Michelle's nodding, yes, Monday that we got more Pfizer. We still haven't heard if we'll get more Moderna next week.
Great. Any questions for Mandy or on Mandy's report?
I don't know if this is for Mandy, but how do you keep, with the Pfizer vaccine, how do you keep it so cold at the fairgrounds? You just transport it from KVH, or do you have to set up there, or what?
So actually, the vaccine does not stay that cold when you go to inject it.
Right, yeah.
It has to be thawed and it does get to room temp. So my understanding of the process, I'm certainly not the expert on it, and maybe Terry might know even more than me, but they have to pull it a certain amount of time in the morning before the vaccine clinic starts. They draw it up in the lab. They bring it, they have a beautiful KVH, actually cooler, it has, it's blue, that they bring it over to the COVID clinic in, and they have to do only a certain number of doses at a time because it expires within six hours of the vial being punctured. So on Tuesday, I know they brought over a batch in the morning, and then they brought over another batch for the afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Mandy. Mandy, when we receive the vaccine, is it being shipped in directly from the manufacturer, or is it coming from a state storage house, or is it someplace Jordan Thorpe? I mean, where is the, where is the vaccines coming from? I've kind of read through the information and I couldn't quite figure out where the, it's coming when it comes to KVH, other than with somebody else gives us some of their extra vaccines.
I don't know exactly where it's coming from. I know a lot of the communication comes directly from the manufacturer about the where it's at and when it's arriving. So specifically with Pfizer, too. It's coming from Pfizer. It's, it looks like it's coming from Pfizer, but I honestly don't know the answer to that. I don't know if anyone else knows.
I know that, looking at the vaccine out in the retail world, when we start getting it, there's a big cold, cold chain thing where you have to be able to view, document every second that that is being moved around, that it stayed within its cold chain and appropriate. So I was just curious, you know, where, where it was, it was coming from. Directly from Pfizer would be, would be probably the least number of hands. That would probably be the best lean process of delivering it because there would be less people touching it, and less likely that it would get damaged.
My belief is that's what, that's what it looks like is happening from just on the communication that we get. It's from Pfizer and from the shipper, but, and I'll tell you, so there's a monitor in the pack that monitors the temperature as it's in transport, and then every day we have to document in Vaccine Finder the inventory we have, and we have to have proof of our temp logs. So this is something the pharmacy is doing with Anna every day. They're making sure that this gets done. And that's one reason KVH really is a critical partner in all of this because we don't have a lot of ultra cold storage in the county, and so that's, that's a big reason that we're a part of this whole big effort is because we do have ultra cold storage that we're using for Pfizer.
Okay, well, thank you, Mandy.
We worked today with the county's media company, Genesis, to do some documentation. Nasser was our, the voice of KVH to talk about the importance of maintaining your appointments, how that pertains to preparing the vaccines, and we got some real great footage of the pharmacists and the students actually pulling the vaccines, prepping the vials, some of the storage, and so our hope is by next week that will be turned around and it'll be able to kind of give some education to the community and see some of these things firsthand.
I, I hope it doesn't cause us to have a security issue with somebody case coming in and trying to pick up their own vaccine. But I always worry about things like that when you, we put out videotapes like that, some, there's somebody out there that's gonna look at and go, oh, look at that, I can get my own vaccine out there. I know where I can go now.
Well, it is, it is kind of funny when they showed up at the clinic on Tuesday. There was actually three of them from the pharmacy altogether, and I think we can arrange security through the county sheriff or police department, but they came in, you know, like all together, and it looked like, yeah, this is precious cargo. This is something we want to keep secure. We're not going to let anybody get close to this that shouldn't, so. I, I think that's a really good point, actually, that it's, it's a valuable asset, and we are taking steps to make sure it's secure.
Mandy, how, how much of a notice do we get before the vaccinations arrive? I mean, do we know?
Um, sometimes no notice, like it's that day that we get an email that says it's arriving. Sometimes it's a few days. So it's, it's varied. It, sometimes Anna is going and looking in the registry, just, and checking every day to see if there's some new message attached to what we asked for and to see if it's changed its status and that it looks like it's shipping or not. So that's, that is one challenge is we're not, we don't have really consistent communication and not very much notice before we find out that we're getting some.
Great.
And, Mandy, we've got quite a few people on the waiting list from this week's first round of the fairgrounds. Do we know when the next opening will be for people on the waiting list to try to get vaccinated?
So Wednesday, was it Wednesday evening, they opened up some more spots in Ellensburg, and we're hoping we'll have spots up in Cleelam next week. Those notifications were sent to people on the waitlist to sign up, and those schedules are full that we have open next week.
Thank you.
All this great that Mandy is giving you now. She also was our representative on the Wish Statewide Media Briefing Call last week, and she did a great job. So thank you, Mandy, for representing Kidittas County very well.
I would.
Oh. We did have Anna on Incident Command this morning, and a couple of things I, I did want to mention. That we are getting very, very little notice, and it's very erratic what we're getting and when we're getting it. I think everyone, and, and let me know if you disagree, Mandy, but the supply chain for second doses feels fairly secure. So we're not too worried that we're not going to get the second doses. It's that staying in the pipeline to continue the initial doses that we're concerned about. I do want to point out a couple of things that Anna brought up this morning. You know, yesterday it snowed quite a bit, and we had 252 folks in Ellensburg scheduled to get vaccines, and we actually had the Kidittas County Sheriff's Department go out and pick up some of the folks that weren't able to make it in because of the weather, brought them in to get vaccinated, and then took them back out. So that was, that was the Ellensburg exceeding expectations example. Up in Upper County, Jeff Shear, who runs Medic One for us, is a nurse and an EMT, and he just went out to the homes of people who were not able to make it in because of weather and did the vaccine up there. So I, it's, it's just stunning, the work that's being done in this county and the cooperation, so.
Oh, Mandy, I, I know that the first time that they signed up for the first shots at the fairgrounds, it was quite, quite a hustle. And there are some older people that don't, aren't computer literate. And so consequently, there, there is hard time for them to sign up. I helped several of my neighbors get signed up for the, for the shots because I had chatted with them, but the shots would be, you know, be coming due and stuff like that, and they were really happy that I was able to get them signed up to get it down there. If they can get there, they were just being computer literate, and they were very happy with it. And I was looking through the information. Do we have a process for people in our community that aren't computer literate to actually be able to sign up for, for the vaccine? That's working at all?
To call the health department, there's a phone number, actually, it's I don't remember, I have it memorized.
38351.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Yes, 933-8351, or 1-5, 315. Um, and they are helping people sign up. They, they have gotten a ton of calls, and as you mentioned, we got this going very rapidly, right? We got on a call with Sign Up Genius Tuesday morning, and Wednesday by 3 o'clock, those schedules were out. That was a monumental effort, and of course, we didn't do it perfectly. So there's been some things, some bumps we've encountered, and patients we've had to contact as well as we know that not everyone is going to have access to an email or be able to use email. So a phone line was set up at the county. They do have that staffed. They can help people sign up, but we also are encouraging people to take care of their friends and neighbors and help them. So I help people sign up as well. And, and as much as we can do that, that would be really great because we know the county is also you know, overwhelmed with all the work they're doing right now. So um, we have had quite a few people, too, that are on the waitlist and don't have an email, and they do get called. Although we are not calling every person on the waitlist, if they have an email, we're using the email to notify them when there's new schedules, but those who do not have email, they are getting called.
And one of the issues with the, the sign-on thing that I noticed when I was signing them up was I've signed up for other things in my life, and when you click on a time to sign up, it holds that time for you for a few minutes until you finish signing up. When I was signing up one of the individuals, it took me three times to get them signed up because I clicked on a time, started signing it, when I finished it, it said, oh, your time's already been taken. And that happened to me twice. So that is, I would think, a little feature in the, in the signup thing. I don't know who actually could have addressed that. But it would be nice if you clicked on a time, it maybe would hold it off for maybe five or 10 minutes, allow you to, you know, finish signing up. But, yeah, it was quite the, quite the race. I was able to succeed and get them signed up, but I kept, you know, dropping down the time to do it. So I'm sure that that's very frustrating for some of our community members trying to sign up for that. They get all their information and then find out that their time is taken away because they weren't quick enough to get it signed up. Anyway.
Yeah, that is very frustrating. That happened to me as well, and, and it did happen to other people. I can ask Sign Up Genius. That's part of our team working with the county on that. So I'll ask. It does bring up another really pertinent issue in the whole world, is that we have more demand than we have supply. So this is going to continue, where we have, no matter the format, we have more people that want it than we have available at any given moment. And so just really asking people to be patient as we can, and we're doing our best. No system is going to be perfect and and perfect to use. This is, this is the best we've come up with so far, as opposed to calling, you know, 3,000 people to try and get them, get them on.
Okay, well, thank you, Mandy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've heard nothing but really people super impressed and grateful that, how it's flowed out, how it's, you know, it is how it's approached that community level of people, you know, taking care of their neighbors. I mean, it's huge, and it's stuff that, that makes us different than much larger communities because you got people going to their home to give them vaccine. That's just unheard of in most of the world, so. Kudos to staff, kudos to those that, you know, were contacted by news media and did such a really good job, and yeah, it's it's, it's very impressive.
I had a conversation today about why we're so successful and other people aren't. And it's because we live in the Goldilocks zone of community size, where people feel they know each other and take care of each other. It's not so big that they feel that everything is impersonal. But if it's too small a community, you can't do this kind of work either because you need, you know, the tremendous personnel. So we're in the Goldilocks zone of community size.
Thank you. Anything else, Mandy, or any questions for Mandy? Thank you. So we'll move on to CEO report with Julie.
Yeah, I think we should all chastise Mandy for her brief report to distract from the fact that I didn't provide one at all this month, so. And again, I had, I appreciate having some time off. I'd just come back and it was all vaccine, all the time, and the story was changing about every four hours. So I appreciate the grace of being allowed to not provide a report. I do want to talk about a couple of things with the foundation, and then just sort of the environment around vaccine distribution right now. But the good news, let's start with the foundation. And, and one of the things I think I reported last meeting is I had reached out, you know, the county was doing those calls to, the public health department was doing calls to folks who were positive for COVID in the community. It's my belief, and I think it's shared by a lot of people here, that that contact for very, very vulnerable people was one of the reasons that our hospital and our emergency department wasn't being overwhelmed the way somewhere. So just that human contact. Well, the county let us know that they were not going to be able to continue to do that. I reached out to Laura at the foundation, and in less than a week, she assembled the board of hospice friends, her own foundation board, and worked with Kyle to identify volunteers in the community. And every single day, and Don Solberg is a member, a retired medical professional, but also a member of the foundation board as part of that as well. Every day they are making calls to these folks that are positive, and I, people are, people who need that are just overwhelmed by that reach out, by that touch that they're receiving. So again, that partnership, the county wasn't able to do it anymore, and just that quickly, we got volunteers and to, to continue that service, service, excuse me, and I do believe that that's a key part of the success that we've had in this county with hospitalization rates. So kudos to them for doing that. I think they are, one of the things we've discovered in this is, you know, it's been a very limited opportunity this past year for people who typically volunteer to volunteer. And boy, you don't have to make much of a call out to get people who are really, really anxious to help their neighbors and help the community. So it, it's just been an overwhelming response, and, and I want to thank the foundation for that. So while I was there thanking them for that, I, I pulled one of the, what have you done for me latelys, and asked them for a contribution to purchase four CAD pumps for our hospice service. And, and Dr. Martin, can I prevail on you to explain sort of why these pumps are so important as they are?
So there are occasions in hospice work where normally we can control most symptoms using medications that we can give orally or under the tongue, or in a patch, or even rectally, but there are times where you simply need to be able to give medicines IV. The problem is how to do that, especially with controlled substances in the home. The CAD pump is a programmable device that we can send home with the patient. They can be set up for patient-controlled analgesia, so that when the patient, when the baseline dose isn't enough, the patient has a button they can push and get some extra medicine. We had a patient about three weeks ago, who actually needed two medications IV, including some of the highest doses of opiates I've seen in my career. And the, the cost for us, for a month's rental and medication, was roughly the purchase price of 10 pumps. And so by bringing that in-house, we've strengthened our own services, and we've done it in a way that's much more sustainable. And given ourselves another, more ready access to, to another club in the bag.
Thank you. So all good news from the foundation. Their board meeting was this, this Monday, and they approved it at the meeting. I thought I'd have to get back to Laura and, and do an additional request, but by the end of the meeting, they had approved that. So thank you again to the foundation. They have been a super partner. That on top of, I think it was $280,000 that they'd given us already in January, so.
The, the time lag from the time that we identified the need to the time that we had the approval to purchase was on the order of two weeks, which is phenomenal.
Fabulous. So, so all good news there. The state of vaccine, and I, this is a story, so anybody who wants to add to this, feel free, but I, I think it is fair to say that hospitals around the state are, are being short-changed. They feel like they're being short-changed in terms of vaccine. We know that the governor's plan is to divert those first doses, a large portion of them, from the existing distribution plans to the high-volume sites that have been set up around the state. And four of those so far have been set up around the state. So one is located in Benton County, and I've heard from a couple of hospitals there that they've been told that they either are not getting any more vaccine, or that it's been dramatically cut. So I know that's true up in the northern part of the state. So they are trying to get these supplies, and again, the governor's asking for 45,000 shots in arms every day, and he confirmed again at his press conference today that he, we're getting about 100,000 doses a week. So that math is not adding up, that very scarce supply that the hospitals, public health departments, and others were using just became scarcer as we try to stand up these high-volume, these high-volume vaccination centers. So some communities are very, very upset, upset that they feel like their vaccine was diverted to someone else. And anybody, anything else that I'm, so vaccine is unstable, Kidittas County so far. I don't think we've seen that phenomenon, as in cases not apparent, Moderna is being used up in the vaccination clinic in Upper County. It's a little easier to handle and manage. That is why the Pfizer's being done in Ellensburg, so I, we're trying really hard not to send messages about shortchanging Upper County or creating winners and losers here. It's just frankly a function of the way that the vaccine has to be managed. So we are hoping, we know that we'll have 975 or 1,000 or so for the Ellensburg clinic next week, and we are hoping and hopeful that we have 500 Moderna that will be going up to Upper County next week as well. So that's the state of play for vaccines. One of the things I do want to point out, and I hate when this happens, but one of the Washington State hospitals took a real PR hit in that they had offered special scheduling opportunities for their top 100 foundation donors. So they gave them a special access code so that they would be able to go in and schedule an early and special appointment for donors. I just, that is not a good idea, and I just want to apologize to anybody who thought if they made a big donation to the foundation, they would be getting their vaccine early because we have no plans to create a VIP list here. We're trying to make sure that this is all very, very equitable in this county, and I do think that's how it's being perceived.
Julie, I, I, I find that really interesting because when I signed up for my shot, since I'm a pharmacist, frontline healthcare worker, you know, during a phone call, and they said, yes, I qualify, and I said, okay, I want to make sure, you're, I'm qualifying because I am a healthcare worker on the front lines and not because I'm a commissioner. Please verify that. And they said, yes, just because you're a commissioner, you would not be able to get the shot. And I said, that is the right answer. Thank you so much for verifying that.
Absolutely. So, and the governor did have a press conference this afternoon. Two of our regions, it is the, let me see, King County, Puget Sound region, and the West region are moving into phase two. They're adjusting the way that they're sort of managing the metrics. They're going from a one-week look back to a two-week look back, and you no longer have to hit all four of the targets. You just have to hit three of the targets. I'm already having community members via email responding to that and reacting to that, and people are not very happy. So, you know, we are in a region that includes Kidittas, Yakima, Benton, Franklin, Walla Walla, and Columbia counties. We, Kidittas. We, Kiddatass County are going to have a very difficult time moving the needle with the population centers of Yakima and the tri-cities in our region. So yeah, I, I think we might want to lobby Dr. Larson to see if we could get ourselves attached to the west region as opposed to the south central region that we're currently in. So he had some others, Michelle and I were chatting before the official meeting started. It was a tough press conference for the governor. I, he took some pretty sharp questions about equity, about sort of moving the goalposts kind of feeling that was going on and about vaccine distribution. So Michelle, did I miss any opportunity to?
No, I think I provided appropriate, as Dr. Gray.
And with that, again, I want to thank you and apologize for not having a report. And it won't happen again, so.
Julie, I just have one, one quick thing, if it's all right. I know that Amanda's still out. I was reminded when we were doing our, when I was filling out the board evaluation, we used to, you know, when Bob and Erica and I first got on the, on the board, we used to get like regular reports on, on employee, let's see, employee surveys and things like that. And I know we did a little bit of that, I don't know, a couple of years ago. And we've been keeping up with SLT's opinions through the CEO evaluation process, which I appreciate. But just sort of a heads up maybe, and I don't know if other, how other board members feel about this, but I feel like I might like to, to have some indication of, of how on the ground employees are doing, especially in this, in this environment where there's a lot of pressure and burnout and things like that. How are other board members feeling?
I think it's a good idea, Matt.
So, and, and I'll just say it's on the work plan for human resources this year to do a full, to stage an employee opinion or engagement survey. For a number of years, we use the tiny pulse. If you'll recall, we had a, a question every week or every month that we went out with. But we do want to reestablish a baseline in terms of employee engagement, and that's on the calendar for 2021.
All right, that's good to hear. Yeah, that's something I'll be really interested in seeing. Thank you.
Anything else for me? Rhonda's here. Rhonda's been out vaccinating all week.
Hello?
All right, thank you.
Great. Any other questions in, for Julie? If not, we'll go into medical staff with Dr. O'Brien, chief of staff.
Sorry, Bob, did you want to ask if there are any, just check again if there are any public, public comments or anything?
I was gonna do that at 5:30 at our normal time.
Okay.
Oh, it is 5:30. Watch yourself. Yes. Thank you, Matt. Yeah, we do want to open up for a public comment. Do we have any public comment? If we do, keep it to three minutes. Anybody there? Great. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, appreciate it, Matt, for bringing that up. Dr. Brian?
Yes, I, I have my full report. A little short. Yeah, we, we have, I'm sure you have the same list that I have in terms of providers applying for appointments and privileges, but I'll just quickly run through them. Dr. Becker is ONRAT teller radiologist. Dr. Bevel is ONRAT teller radiologist. And we have three pathologists, David Fink, Thomas King, and Jeffrey Pett. These are all initial one-year provisional appointments. And we recommend that the board approve these applications as, as requested. Then we have three of our own providers, Dr. Burhan Girmay, ED, Emily Stone, family medicine Ellensburg, and we should, we should have the hospitalist applying for a reappointment. And then Dr. Robert Yopundich from Virginia Mason Telstra, applying for a reappointment. Mary Newans, nurse practitioner in wound care. Jennifer Simmons, ED and urgent care provider, nurse practitioner. And Christine Ward, nurse practitioner, pediatric provider. These we recommend also that be approved as requested. And then John Merrill Teskell is requesting to add a privilege of taking care of well baby newborns, which he had before, but he had let lapse, but now he wants to reinstate it. And if there's any questions about any of these, I'd be happy to answer them.
Dr. O'Brien, can you hear me all right?
Yes, I can.
Okay, this is Matt Altman. I just, this is a general question. You know, sometimes when, when things come up, sort of what might be construed as red flags, you know, we, we get the, the doctor's kind of response to it or explanation of it. I guess I'm just curious, as a general rule, how much, how much investigation goes on? You know, if, so hypothetically, not, not talking about any particular doctor on the list or anything, but if someone, for example, had had their license denied, application denied somewhere, you know, if they had an explanation of that, so how, do we double check their, their account of that? Or I'm just curious how?
Yeah, we're going to great depth. In fact, I have a lot of full, full page of information on the one provider that had a red star. It was a complete misunderstanding of what was a medical student and what wasn't by, by a foreign medical graduate. But this was years ago and it's, it was after thorough investigation, it was determined this was just a misunderstanding of how to answer a question. And other than that, there's nothing recent since 30 years ago on this provider.
Yeah, well, I was just talking hypothetically, not about a particular provider, but.
Well, I, well, I certainly maybe saw.
No, it's all right, Dr. O'Brien, I get it. So, so the idea is that if we get a, if we get an account of that or an explanation, we go and verify that account.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. We, anytime there's any issue whatsoever, we research it completely and make our own determination in the medical executive committee about what we should recommend. And in that individual, we recommend an initial provisional associate appointment as requested.
Dr. Martin, did you have something to add?
Yeah, and for those of you that have served on med exec, you're, you're aware of this, but just for the remainder of the board, there is something called the National Practitioner Data Bank. And any, any settlement, any judgment or any revocation of privileges is reportable. And that's part of the packet that we review for, for each provider. And if, if they were sued and settled in 1999, that is in the, the data bank. And so we're notified of that. If we pull somebody's privileges, we have to report that. If we restrict somebody's privileges, we have to report that. And that's one of the reasons the bylaws has provisions around due process. And if we are going to, to restrict someone's privileges, they're entitled to a fair hearing. And there, it's more than just, well, he said he was okay. There, there's an entire infrastructure behind that.
And it's.
Thorough research on these, any question whatsoever.
Yeah, and it's the, every member of the board, before they actually sign off on it, gets to see the whole file. So they get to see all that stuff too. It's actually been some of the most interesting reading I've had as a board member is some of these files. But yeah, thank you for confirming that. Appreciate it.
Yeah. So we recommend that these be approved.
On Dr. Merrill Teskell's, his isn't a reappointment, it's just adding well baby newborn care.
Yeah, it's not reappointment, it's just adding a privilege.
Yeah.
Back.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So can we have a motion to?
I'll move to approve the provider list.
Motion by John?
I'll second it.
A second?
I'll second it.
Second by, by Matt. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Was unanimous. Thank you, Dr. O'Brien.
Okay, let me just add one, one just general observation that I think is really positive. That is, we've added basically five new surgeons under the staff just in the last month or two. And they're all just having cases beyond what I would have expected. So it looks like a, well, an issue of, you know, if you build it, they will come. So I want to, I want to congratulate the foresight of Dr. Martin and Julie in pursuing these other providers. So that, that's all I have.
I know the, I know the board really appreciates how, how we've done with recruiting, how KVH and all of you have done, bringing in these docs. You know, we had this big emphasis on access. So yeah, we're glad you're building it. So thank you very much.
There's another six people Kerry Bar about yet.
Okay. Yeah. Anyway, thank you. That's all I have. Yeah.
In, in the community, there is just, people are really happy with those, you know, having neurology here in particular. People are super excited about that and really gotten good feedback on his, his care. And, and that's a, that's a line we've never had before. So it's a lot of, a lot of new lines of service the last couple of years. And it's really impressive.
I'd like to just pile on a little bit there. There's nothing accidental about that growth. And between Kerry and Mitch Engel and Dr. Martin, and the board has approved a medical staff development plan, and they hit the ground running with that. And there's more to come in very short order, most likely. So wait for it, Kerry. But the element that we added this year is really Tricia's role in this, in helping us to smooth the onboarding process and, and making sure that as we bring these new services in, we're not reinventing the wheel every time. So it, it, it's been a tremendous amount of work. And Kerry, only 17 years old, and bringing up all the clinics over the last three or four years has been very, very difficult work for Dr. Martin and Kerry. And I look forward to Tricia really sort of normalizing or standardizing the process for us.
And I, I think it's not just making sure that we don't reinvent the wheel, but that in fact, we have wheels to put on the car when we get it.
Good point. Yeah, I just, as I mentioned, five surgeons, you know, just added in the last recent past. Well, Dr. Petty was here a little longer, but in actual fact, they're doing a fair amount of surgery right off the bat. And this is of course going to be good for the bottom line. So I think very much well worth the expenditure for the bottom line as well as to serve the community. So anyway, I just want to thank the whole operation.
Great. Thank you. Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Martin?
So we've touched on a lot of the things that I wanted to say. I reported last, at the December meeting earlier this month, that Dr. Wickholm had joined us. We have interviewed two candidates for medical director for hospital medicine. We have a verbal acceptance. We're starting to move forward on that. Other than that, it's been a short interval since last we met. I do want to call out that Dr. Fish is again, serving as interim medical director for hospital medicine. He did that previously when Dr. Hibbs had some family issues to attend to and did a stalwart job. And I appreciate him stepping into that role till spring roughly. Mike Zammott, as Dr. O'Brien was alluding, his first week with us did three cases and attempted to see more patients his first day than he probably should have. It carried nodding vigorously. Either that or the unblinking Kerry has been replaced by a bobblehead, I'm not quite sure. In any case, the, this report in the six days since I submitted it is almost completely out of date. When I wrote it, we had given 1,600 doses. As of this morning, the county had given 3,300. So as of this evening, that's probably closer to 3,800, which again, is just the amazing nimble work of the team and the community. One of the things that in addition to ferrying people in to get their vaccine, we've discovered that right over the door exiting the menastash room is a great place for snow to fall off the roof. And so KBFR was up sweeping the roof. The things you don't think of. But when, when Eric and I were there yesterday, people were being cautioned to look up as they go out. So with that, I'll take any questions.
So Dr. Martin, last meeting, you'd mentioned transitioning to home health and hospice and full-time CMO. Has that started yet?
That, well, my last two clinic days were to be yesterday and a week ago with the governor's press conference Monday, a week ago, it became apparent that I was going to be doing something in more in terms of vaccination. So actually I, I am out of family medicine at this point.
Yeah. Well, thanks for taking on that new assignment. I know it's hard to kind of transition, transition out of something useful about, but.
And it's, it's worth pointing out that Dr. Hibbs has been working with Kerry and has already made some observations that I'm kind of smacking my head saying, why didn't I think of that? So I, I, I think having someone at the medical director level for clinic operations is a bonus. And like I said last time, it just made obvious to me that I was spreading myself a little too thin. And this is a necessary move right now.
You'll be missed. Patients love you. So you, you'll be missed for sure.
It's, it's mutual.
Any other questions for Dr. Martin? No? All right. So Scott Olander, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you. I'd, if, if it's all right, I'd like to share just a screen on the, the actual financials. There are some numbers that moved around quite a bit this, this month. So if it's okay, I'll just share my screen and hopefully you can see it. Is, is the P and L up there for everybody? Revenue? Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay. The, the, we were over budget for the month of December on revenue at $1.8 million. And a good part of that was related to COVID testing that we've been doing. And so that was a positive, you know, a very, very good month. The, on the contractual's line, there is a, a negative variance of 700 and almost $7,000. And that relates to a cost report. And that relates to a cost report settlement that came in in the month of December of $982,000. So that's the reason for the variance and it's, we are very grateful to get that cost report settlement. That's the work that Jason and the Revenue Cycle Team did. Jason in preparing the report and the Revenue Cycle Team in documenting some allowable Medicare bad debt and charity that we can claim. So that's the reason for that negative variance, which is a good variance. Down under other operating revenue, there's a very large negative $3.6 million. And that relates to moving some of the CARES money that we had received down from other operating revenue down to non-operating revenue further down below. And you see the $5.5 million in non-operating revenue. So the, we made that adjustment in consultation. Jason and Kelly and I reached out to our auditors, DCA, Tom Vegas and Shar Schaefer. And after consulting with them, they, we felt like the best spot for reporting the, the CARES money for was, was as a non-operating revenue item. And so that, that is what we did there. So it, it caused that, that, that large negative. And it also is the reason that as you drop down to our, or a doubt, drop down to operating income for the month, that we have a negative, negative operating income for the month of December at $2.9 million. And basically for the year to date, we're a break even from operations at $30, $32,000. Further, but that, that entry was made in consultation with auditors. And we feel like that's the, the right thing. And it actually reflects our overall hospital operations. Down in the non-operating revenue expense, there's, so we moved about $3.5 million of CARES money down there. There is also a $1.5 million benefit to the hospital for debt forgiveness related to rural health clinic adjustment from 2014 to 17. So that's the, the other part of that $5.5 million. So we ended up with a, a net operating income for the month of December of $2.5 million. And year to date and operating, net operating income of $5.7 million. And this, just, I just completed our reporting. We, we report our debt covenants to our bank and lenders. And we are compliant with our debt covenants. It's basically a day's cash and a net income formula. And we are, met all of our debt covenants for the year. Any questions about the P and L? Okay, I'm going to go back up just a couple pages to my, my report and this is on page, page 18 of the first page of my report. In the, the third paragraph is the, under the second bullet, the third paragraph down, we talk about, talk about the, the lost revenue that KVH experienced for the year. And there was a lot of things that caused the, the overall revenue shortfall to be masked. We had ENT, we've added, we had a lot of COVID testing revenue. But in reality, we had a significant surgery shortfall. We, although our ER revenue is at budget, we had a significant decrease in the number of ER visits, which caused a shortfall. And this, this paragraph here is, is the start of a, our argument for keeping more of the CARES money. That we received about $6.6 million in CARES money. We've recognized about $3.5 million. COVID, COVID and a lot of the things that happened this year create, it was a very challenging year and there were some significant revenue shortfalls as a, as due to COVID. And this, this paragraph and in basically prepared it, it's, it's starting, preparing, starting the first part of our argument for keeping more of these, these CARES dollars than we have recognized so far. So that's we, Jason and I and DCA have decided that for us, the, the best approach for documenting the impact of COVID for us is to look at on a, a unit measure, the departments that were hit by the shortfall. And surgery was a big department as we post delayed surgeries in March and April and early part of May. There was a significant financial hit as the number of patients coming into our ER, although the acuity of the patients coming in is up. And so the overall revenue per visit is up. There was a significant shortfall, shortfall in patients coming in through the emergency department. And there's an income hit related to that or revenue hit. And then also with the physical therapy, there was a, a gap. And so there's a significant lost revenue there and also in imaging. So this is the start of our argument to be able to keep more of those CARES dollars coming in later.
So can I just, in addition to revenue shortfall, I, I would just remind the board how frequently and how readily the CARES money has allowed KVH to say yes to the county needs, to standing up the vaccine clinics, to opening and, and keeping open our testing sites. Without, without that CARES money, we would have been scrambling to help support the county in some of these efforts. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, that particular piece of legislation is working as planned. So it's not just lost revenue, it's also the, the cost of the efforts that KVH has made together with its partners to help battle this.
Absolutely. On the, just would like, on the bottom of this last, the next page on page 19, I'd just like to make a comment about the, the, the days, days and accounts receivable and the work that the Revenue Cycle Team has done this last year. And we've actually, we ended the year at 73 and a half days on hand. And if you look a year ago, we're, we're, we've, we've dropped our overall days and accounts receivable by about 15 days for the year. And very positive trend. Collect, total collections in 2019, including everything that came in, was about $86 million. Total collections that came in, including CARES dollars in 2020 were $102 million. So we had an overall increase of about $15 million. This, you know, the, the rev, the rev cycle team, you know, all this COVID work, we've, we've built about 16,000 COVID tests and we're, will, and have paid for those tests. So the rev cycle team has really done outstanding work in, in lowering the AR and has done it dive, pulling cash in the door. And it's been done in a really tough environment. You know, COVID has impacted our community. It's impacted business people. It's impacted, there's unemployment in the community. So it is a, a difficult time to collect money from individuals. And we've made some chat changes in our collection practices. You know, we, we have stopped a year, over a year ago, the collection agencies that we use for accounts that end up in collection, we don't, they, we prohibited them from taking legal action on accounts, on accounts that they otherwise would have. So these dollars and these receipts have been brought in in a very difficult environment. And just they've done really, really outstanding work in, in, in the efforts. And so it's, all in all, it's been a challenging year, but a very, very good year. And financially for the organization, and I believe we're well positioned to, for 2021. Are there any questions about the financial report? No, none?
No, I was, I'll just make a quick comment. You look at the total charges for the year 2020, 2020, you know, 160 million. But you go back five years ago, total charges were like 119. I mean, the five years, you look at how much more is happening in the hospitals for service lines and access to patients and patient care. And it just, it, it just feels good. And I'm glad that we're moving in such a positive direction. But that's a big difference in five years. That kind of growth and just total, total charges, even, even net revenues is up. So, and that's because we're just having better access and more services.
Better access and more services. And it's, it is relating, it's generating also a need, as, as I'm going to ask in a moment, for some additional
Just thanks.
Additional capital. I, but let me, so the, so, so one of, one of the requests that went to the, the Finance Committee was to replace some, some ER stretchers that are needed. And these are just normal replacements for its two stretchers at a, at a cost of about 30, almost $32,000. There was, I say there was unanimous support for purchasing these, these stretchers. So I would ask if, kind of an action that we get, that the board approve purchasing these stretchers.
I would
So we have a request. So we have a request for a new stretcher for the emergency room. Motion was initiated by John. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Erica. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed? Great, thank you.
I have, there's a second request here. And this went to the Finance Committee as well. And this is for renovation of, or expansion of storage space for supplies. And the, I, I think there was conditional recommendation that this be purchased, subject to John wanted some additional information about what we were planning and the need for it. And so John and Ron and Morgan Anderson and Amy Krogstad and I met yesterday and walked John through, kind of showed him the, the space constraints and the challenges that we are, we have with supplies right now. And, but it's, it's, it's $264,000 is a big number. And John, is there, I, I don't know if we made our case successfully or not yesterday, but hopefully we did.
Yeah, Scott, I really appreciate you putting together the tour on short notice. And, you know, Amy and Morgan and Ron for taking time out of their day to, to walk me around. It was very educational to see the, the, the two factors involved here, all the extra PPE because of the COVID situation and the growth we've had in those additional surgeries and the materials they need for each unique specialty. And we're just kind of obviously bursting at the seams. So yeah, the walkthrough definitely brought the clarity to me. And, you know, I was left with the impression that even though we're going to grow in other areas, the money we, we put in here, this space, you know, we'd have a good 10 plus years to utilize this upgrade to kind of amateurize this expense for this sort of storage we need to do. And then as we grow in other areas, we'll have to get additional storage in the near future. Because I think the reality is, even with this upgrade, on day one, we're still at kind of max storage capacity. And that needs to be addressed. So that's something I'll be talking with the other board members about in the very near future as we try to strategize that side of the plan. So yeah, so having walked through it, without a doubt, we need to do it. We need to make more room and, and the proper room too. This will create, turn the shed into a space that can be used for a wider variety of materials. So I would support and encourage the other board members to support this budget expense. Any questions for me or Scott on, on why we're doing here?
So I have a question on that shed back there. Because it, because of the water setback, you can't actually, can you make it bigger or you have to just stay within the existing walls of that storage?
I'm gonna, I think Ron is on the line. I, Ron, can you answer that question for Bob?
Yeah, I, we're going to be working within the existing footprint of that shed. So it'll just be a, a room within that, that we'll construct that will, you know, keep it clean. And then we'll be able to condition just that area for the story and, and secure it. Yeah, you're right. I think if we tried to add on to that building, we would run into some offset issues because of that, correct?
Yeah, okay, all right. Yeah, thank you.
Welcome. And we, I know there was some concern whether we'd be allowed to keep materials management storage out there. And we ran that by DOH, we had a flung over review with them. And we are okay doing that. So with the, kind of with the requirement is we need to keep it in its original boxes. And it's almost like it's still in shipment. And then when we go to use those products, we then bring them over to the hospital and unbox them the room there and then get them to their cleaning environment. They were okay with that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? John, thanks for doing that, that tour. And yeah, Scott, thanks for putting that together. So do we have a motion to, for the Materials Management Store Room project?
So I would move to approve this expense.
So we have a motion by John. Do we have a second?
I second it, just Terry.
A second by Terry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I will stop sharing my screen now if there's, unless there's any other questions. Very good. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Scott. So moving to operations with Chief Nursing Officer with Vicki.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My report is on page 39. And I don't have anything additionally to add other than to piggyback up on the, the surgery and all the new surgeons. Amy's been, and I think I put that maybe in that report, but she's been working really, really hard on, of course, these surgeons have tools they need. And so there's a lot of these tools we don't have. And she's been working really hard and goes up. And I think Dr. Zammatt was an example of that. He did three cases on his first week and we're still continuing to work with him and vendors in order so that he can provide even more additional types of surgery for his patients. Any questions at all? I'll be happy to, to answer comments about my report.
Hey, Becky, I talked with Dr. Zammatt and he said he's extremely happy with the work you guys are doing to get equipment. He said you got top of the line stuff for him and he's thrilled.
That's good to hear. That goes back to Morgan and Bonnie in materials and then Amy as well and her crew. So I'll let, I'll let them know.
Great, thanks. Any other questions for Vicki?
I have a question. The, the staffing focus for emergency and urgent care, is that fairly critical or are we scraping by at, at some sort of comfortable level?
Yeah, urgent care seems to be settled, settled. And there's new folks in place there. The ER is in kind of flux. She just additionally had a couple texts that put in their resignation. So we we, she has a lot of pretty young staff and they are picking up. And then as far as the techs go, the, the patient care technicians, they are just, they're working a lot of overtime. So we are getting by.
What's driving the deficit? Is it staff being out for COVID exclusion? Or is it people leaving, residing?
Yeah, none of it is due to exclusions. We have, I'm, I'm happy to say all of our staff out of seclusion and isolation or quarantine and back from illnesses. She has, the patient care technician role in the ER is kind of a stepping stone. There are a lot of her staff that go to school and get degrees, either medical degrees or nursing degrees. So a lot of them have left to pursue, you know, higher, or they've gotten their licenses and they've moved away else or going to school.
Well, at least that's a cheerful reason to be in a deficit.
Right, right.
And Dee, Jeff, Jeff Holden and Steel staff from one another regularly. So they're always swiping folks. So.
Yes, yes.
Well, sounds like mid surge and CCU's been pretty busy.
Yeah, the last two weeks, in fact, I've had a couple of calls in the evening saying we're out of beds, what should we do? So, and, and we managed to, to, you know, double up a, a room on a, a couple of days, which was a new experience and the staff did very well. Yeah. But this week we're, we're trending down a little bit. So they need a little rest. I can catch up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? So we'll move to Rhonda, Chief Anfley Officer.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Let's see, to add to my report, I'm, I would say my mother has become quite the celebrity. Her picture is on the front page of the Tribune for being one of the first to receive their community COVID shots in Upper County. And then she's also been interviewed by marketing for, I think for advertising for Dr. Gustafson. So you'll see her picture around quite a bit, I'm sure. And I've been working Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and again tomorrow in the Clealum Vaccination Clinic, which has just been a lot of fun and really emotional, I think, for everyone. I was able to vaccinate a 96-year-old World War II veteran. That was just an honor. And we've had people who are 100 years old coming in. And it's just been, it's been great. The community coming together is just unbelievable. And, and people are raving about it. So I know other areas are wanting to copy the great work that our team has put together. And I know Rich Elliott has been offered to go to Shalane and, and help them develop their program, which he has turned down.
I was gonna say, just say no.
Yeah, he's got his hands full here. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the rest of my report.
Rhonda, I just want to echo your sentiment about the tremendous work being done. I volunteered yesterday at the fairgrounds and there were not a small amount, number of people who, it was a tremendous number of people who talked about how it's a well-oiled machine. It was the smoothest process ever. They were going to tell all their friends how great it was. And there were a couple of full grown men, obviously, because, you know, most of them were elderly, who had lumps in their throats, talking about how thankful and grateful they were and how thrilled they were about the process. And they just were raving about it. So I promised them all that I would relay that good news to the team. So doing that now.
Thank you. Yeah, Mandy's team has just been tremendous in pulling together and doing all the planning. So kudos to them.
Well, and Carrie too.
And Carrie.
Board for, for giving us these resources and letting us play and be part of the community and not get so, I guess, selfish with our resources. It's, Julie's absolutely right because of the funds and the, the way our board leads and Julie's led us, that we're able to go and do this work with partners.
I just had a patient today that I did minor surgery on a scalp cancer. And he had got his COVID vaccine up at the fairgrounds yesterday and he couldn't stop raving about what an awesome, smooth operation was. And he's kind of a picky guy.
So I just have to say, it's not that we're competitive or anything, but the first day these were open, Ellensburg did 281 and Clealum did 284. But who's counting, right?
So any questions for Rhonda? Thank you, Rhonda. Good job. And then Carrie Barr, Chief of Clinic Operations.
Good evening. So my report starts on 40 and goes from there. Couple of things I'd like to add. So you've heard a lot about Dr. Zammatt because he's our, our newest service line. Dr. Martin had stated, we, we probably overbooked his first day. Yes, we did. We, we got real excited and, but, but that's okay. We were still able to see all of the patients. It just didn't go as smoothly as our, as our perfectionists would have liked it to go. So that's all right. We had time to work out some of those, those kinks. And he did happen to stop at DeVita while he was here in town and walked out with 12 referrals. So that's, that's the kind of need that, that we're tapping into, to help our community members. And that just, that feels really, feels really good. So the other piece, Vicki and myself and Amy Krogstad, we had just rescheduled our January inpatient surgeries that, that had, that didn't fit our criteria based on our, on our staffing matrix and, and our, our bed availability. And starting, and then starting in February, we have released that. So staffing is much better. We're keep, Vicki's keeping an eye on the beds, but we are allowing inpatients, particularly our total joints. We do want to keep our total joints to about two a week. When we get too many of those, particularly during our, our IC season, then we, we can get over, overbooked really quickly, unexpectedly. So they, they still, the surgeons still use the condition or the questioning in terms of if it would cause any additional harm or worsen the condition. So they're still use that criteria in terms of that scheduling. So anyway, other than that, I've got a lot of cool things on my report. Feel free to ask me any questions about it.
Yeah, so the clinics are getting a lot of phone calls.
We are, yes, we, we're getting, that has not slowed down. As you can imagine, people are really, really anxious to, to get onto that schedule, particularly our family medicine and internal medicine. They're the ones that are getting hit the hardest with those phone calls. We are having our, our patient service representatives have signed up patients. They thought, you know, it's just easier to, they'll ask them if you have an email address and they'll just go ahead and schedule those, those appointments on signup genius, which is very sweet. You can't, you can't stop again, just the good work that the community members are doing for each other. So.
Can I?
Well, yeah, sometimes they'll do that. They'll set up, they'll set the appointments for the people calling in.
They, yes, they have. And it's, and it's mainly when you have our patients who call and they either can't get through to another line or don't have family members. It's just, it's exactly what we're all doing for people who contact us.
Yeah, nice.
I was out on the county's website, actually the state's website today. And it appears to me that in that 1B category, just purely the 65 and older, Kidditas County has about 5,800 residents. Does, does anyone have a better number than that? Or is that, it's about 12% of our population according to the state. So we're, we're getting through these 1Bs pretty quickly. And so hopefully Carrie's PSRs will get a break here soon.
The last number that I saw was that 65%, or excuse me, 15% of the county population was 65 and older. But that was a 2018 number?
Anything else for Carrie? Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
And then we have Community Relations Report. Michelle.
Good evening, everybody. Really, the one thing I wanted to point out is Mandy's team has taken my Catherine Brunner to work on the vaccination efforts for the county. She's the Vaccine Clinic Coordinator. So it's excited to see her shine in that role and do great things for the county and work with KBH and the county and all of the partners. So that, that is a temporary position and we are not filling her current position of event coordinator at this time. Other than that, I think it's all in the report. Be happy to take any questions that you have. All right. Thank you very much.
Great, appreciate it. Education and board reports. There's no education of a bit coming up in February. That I think most of the board is going to, but no education happening at this time. We have old business, where I just wanted to touch base on, we did, we, we, Eric and I did an assessment and we finished that assessment and met with Julie and so grateful for, for Julie, for her expert, expertise, kind of all the things that have taken place in a positive way over these last three years. So definitely hope that we can continue to move forward and grateful for the SLT and their input and their ability to discuss and how to just continue to make healthcare better in our county. And I just, I feel fortunate that we have such a, such a great group of core people that are getting things done. So yeah, just wanted to report that the, Julie's evaluation was, is done, very positive evaluation. Appreciate her, appreciate her leadership and that, that soft managerial skills and hard managerial skills that, that position requires.
I appreciate it. And.
Yeah, any other? Go ahead.
I, I appreciate the process also. I appreciate getting input from the other strategic partners we have and from SLT and from all the board members. So thank you all for participating.
Yeah.
Let me add, I just hope that all these awesome people don't move to hire bigger things and leave us.
There's always.
Good as it gets, Dr. O'Brien. There's nothing higher and bigger than KBH. So.
True.
Yeah. Erica or the other board members, do you have any, any comments on?
I'll echo your sentiment. Very positive experience. I think that the, the appreciation is, is widespread, fairly unanimous. Everybody had their own unique, great things to say. I, I'm thrilled, happy to be a part of that process. And yeah, and very pleased.
Yeah. Yep, everybody's wonderful. I agree. Thanks.
There's nothing happier than being part of a great team.
That's true. That's true. Thanks, Bob and Erica for heading this up, by the way. Appreciate it. Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you. New business? Do we have any new business that needs to come forward?
Old business, the, I think it was old business. Sorry, my iPad is not scrolling right now. The event, the Zoom event in February for the Rural Healthcare AHA, I believe. Do we have an agenda for that yet?
You should have received an email when I signed you up and it has the agenda in there. If you did not, let me know and I can look for it.
Okay, I'll peek again. I searched, I thought I did a pretty thorough search, but with the outlook, the emails drop off after a certain time and I don't always trust the search on that. So I'll, I'll check again.
Okay, I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Thank you, Mandy.
There were, as part of that, you could, you could get involved if you wanted to in these affinity groups. I don't know if you guys saw that. But the first, there was a meeting this morning, and again, this is optional, right? So you don't need to do this. But this morning, there was a talk for the Rural Conference Affinity Group on resilience in an ongoing crisis. So that was this morning. And then Julie, I don't, this one that we had this afternoon, Julie and I participated in this Governance Affinity Group from 12 to 130. Those are part, I, I get some of these confused sometimes, but that was part of this Rural Conference, right?
Right, that's correct. And I think, John, you were on that as well, weren't you? Yeah. So.
Okay, sorry. So yeah, so that's, I don't know if that's in board education or what, but, but yeah, some of these affinity group presentations have started.
The only other.
And I will.
Bob, do you want to, we had talked about the format for the February meeting. We were going to try to hold an in-person meeting, but Mandy will be reaching out as we get closer to the date. So.
Yeah, that would be great to have it in person, knowing that, you know, things are fluid. So, but that's, that's the tentative plan is to try to do it in meeting if we, if that, have that ability. And then we also have a special meeting with the board self-evaluation that is also on the schedule for February. So anything else?
Bob, this is Terry. John and I did a Gimba in the lab the other day. And I just want to mention that the plan for the expansion, Stacy went over it and showed us what she's expanding and stuff like that. And it is, it looks like it's going to move very forward, very well. I was very happy with the, the visit with Stacy and it was really good. And I got a kick out of the storage issue. Some of the areas in the lab are being stored with supplies for their machines that is over, overfilling the area. So it was really, really good chatting with Stacy and having us show the lab. And that, it, it's still a very efficient process in there, but it's a very tight process. So I felt, I think John and I both probably felt that we were actually in the way of people saving their lives, but it was really good. So anyway, just, just to let you know that from my perspective, we're moving forward really well with the, the lab expansion.
Yeah, that's, that's a, when you tour through that, you see how much work they do in that small space. There's a lot, lot of, lot of work happening. So yeah, I think it's great. And I, I hope that we can continue with the Gimbas at different areas, right? Once things really kind of calm down a little bit. But those are super informative to, just to see the hands on. Okay, anything else? If not, we'll retire this meeting. We do have executive session, which is, we should have received an email. And we can adjourn for how much time? I mean, I'm fine coming back quickly, Bob. Yeah, so five minutes?
And there's no action anticipated. So.
No action. Great. Yeah, thanks, everybody. Thanks.
How long of an executive session?
All the hard work and thank you so much. Oh, yeah. So.
How long, how long of an executive session are you anticipating?
Julie?
Um, this is probably an hour.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Our executive session. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye. Thank you. Bye.